Welcome to the school committee meeting for Monday, October 18th, 2021. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holliday.
President.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Bennon.
Here.
Mr. Hawkeizer.
Here.
Ms. Baldwin.
Here.
And Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Ruden, Ms. Sampson.
All right, could we please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Callahan?
Thank you. I'm just gonna make sure that I will be taking a picture of what I'm supposed to be taking a picture of. Okay, hello, thanks everybody for coming. Um, we don't seem to have anybody in the public room on Zoom, I can tell. Oh no, nope, there we go. Um, all right, we're gonna enter into the, or here at public comment, right? I'm gonna read the little disclaimer here and then we're gonna accept public comments. We have come to the part of our meeting where the school committee invites members of the public to offer public comments. If you're remote, we ask that you raise your hand. You will be called on in order, have it speakers that are in person speaking. We would ask that all speakers respect the following guidelines. Speakers will be given two minutes to present their comments. Improper conduct or remarks will not be taken allowed. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs as concern them. The committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel, nor those against any member or members of the school community. We expect and encourage stability and remarks that are defamatory or abusive or always considered out of order. The chairperson may terminate that individual's privilege on a dress online basis. Additionally, we request that no names or any identifying information that we violate any student's written privacy be offered as part of comment. Public comments are important to the committee and are welcome. Comments longer than two minutes may be submitted to the district office in writing for inclusion into the minutes of the meeting. All right, um, I don't see any hands for the remote people, so we're gonna go straight to the in-person people. Is there anybody that'd like to make public comment tonight? Seeing none, we will close the public comments section of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Cole?
Sure, we have two warrants. I move that the following need bills of the Newburyport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate $402,568.13 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There were no conflicts.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Are there none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Were there any more?
All set.
That's it?
That's it.
Minutes. This is the minutes for Monday, October 4th. Is that correct? Is that the only one on here? That's the only one, correct. Uh, we have the minutes for Monday, October 4th. That was the public forum at the NOC, followed by a short business meeting. Is there any motion to a three minutes?
Hi.
Second.
I had one edit to make. Does that happen after? Okay. Just to change CPAC in its, under new business, and to change the spelling of that to S-E-P-A-C from C-P-A-C. Yes, to change the acronym CPAC under new business to CPAC, which is S-E-P-A-C. Stands for the Special Education Parents Advisory Council.
Bruce, second?
Yeah, under the, um, committee reports on the second page for joint ed, my comments actually were part of the CISL ad hoc committee report, which was, it's C-I-S-L. So that was, that came in a separate report. And that's the Curriculum Instruction and Student Life Committee. Thank you.
Mayor Alda.
Senator, um, I wanted to know if it would be possible for us to insert a link to the COVID public forum into the minutes so that people could click on it and pull up the, pull up the forum?
Yep.
If that, if that could happen?
Yep.
Thank you. I think that would be very helpful.
Is there a link to that on the school website?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
It should be in the minutes and it'll be easy for people to get it.
Well, if more links, the better.
Yep.
It should be right on the front page of the district site, or the school committee page on the district site. So I guess we need a motion to accept it as amended, correct?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, and next we have our new, Newburyport High School student representatives, um, and I guess the page, excuse me, sorry about that.
Olivia Hansen and Avery Hawkeizer.
Thank you, Mayor Alda. Uh, welcome, um, I guess, welcome. Do you have any interesting stories to tell us about soccer games and anything else that happened this week?
Yes. Um, the student members of the mental health.
Way, way close to your mouth.
Is it showing a green light, Mayor?
What?
Yes.
There you go. You gotta speak into it, slow down.
The student members of the Mental Health Awareness Club bring change tonight, had a purple out on Friday, September 24th in school and at the football game to highlight suicide prevention.
You gotta speak up.
You have to slow down, please. I'm sorry, the technology is really challenging. And speak right into the mic and very loud.
You want my help?
No, I'm, okay.
Mayor Johnson.
There you go.
Okay, that works. Um, the student members of the Mental Health Awareness Club bring change tonight, had a purple out on Friday, September 24th in school and at the football game to highlight the suicide prevention month. And the club, B C two, which is the acronym for it, sold bracelets and raised over $400 for the suicide prevention hotline. And, um, the college and career center, along with the guidance department, held a series of workshops for seniors to work on their college lists, applications, make sure they have teacher letters and their foundation, and that their common and non-accounts were matched. We had eighty-seven seniors attend through the workshop series.
The NHS College Fair on September 29th was a great success. We had forty-four colleges and universities join us and over a hundred and thirty students attended the fair. It was a wonderful night with lots of energy and excitement around the college search process. Students and families engaged with the college admissions reps, arming them with information and materials to move folk or to end their process. A really big thank you to those families who donated food and water for the college reps. Also, the area businesses who donated coffee, sparkling water, and pizza for the college reps to enjoy. These include Aroma Joe's Coffee House, Spindrift Sparkling Water, Pomodori Newburyport, Pork Pizza and Subs, and Stonecrest Pizza. On Wednesday, October 13th, grades ten and eleven took their PSATs while grade nine engaged in three different orientation activities, team building, planning for success, and small groups with their guidance counselor. Many of our, many of our seniors registered to visit a college on that day and others scheduled time to work on their college applications in our college and career center.
And, um, just over a week ago, the first poetry soup of the school year took place. Over thirty students listened to the readings of their peers, beginning with Audrey Hoover and ending with the mellow music of the trio of Depp and Callahan, Charlie Coe, Spider, and Patrick Walker. This was after an inspiring student open mic and a dynamite performance by guest poet Cole Rodriguez. The next poetry soup will be held on Wednesday night, October 20th, featuring Anthony Fago and Ricky Orne. Everyone's welcome to come and share writing and music at the open mic or just listen and enjoy. Our student council met for the first time on October 14th. They are looking to draft their own proposal to the current half policy here at the high school.
Since late September, seniors have been working in their civics classes on their active citizenship projects. This year, their focus is on local issues and in particular, the mayoral election. On Tuesday, NHS will host Mr. Tontar and Mr. Riordan in a debate in front of all students that are taking either civics or AP government this semester. Candidates will be asked questions derived from students' interests and that relate directly to student research. Now for news from the middle school. Cross-country is crushing it. This month is socktober and eighth grade students will be bringing in socks that will donate to the greater community. Eighth grade team is also doing an amazing job bringing in local leaders and having positive student dialogue.
Um, in terms of recognitions, Brady O'Donnell was recognized as the Bay State Games National Athlete of the Year, as well as being recognized as the National State Games Male Athlete of the Year. He is the first male adult from Massachusetts to earn his award. Luke O'Brien has run another successful gear to share donation program. Use supportive gear that was collected, use worn gear that was collected, and the final use of several benefit many locally used and needed supplies. As a reminder, accumulated service hours can count towards high school credit. Seventy-five hours of documented service equates to two point five credits, which is the equivalent of a semester class. One hundred fifty hours of documented service equates to five credits, which is equivalent to a full year class. And then Nicholas Forstel, after having several of his photographs of birds published in the Cornell's Northeast Field Guide as part of Cornell Lab of Ornithology, has his work recommended to Classic Brands LLC and manufacturer bird feeders and accessories.
This year, we will have three students to serve as representatives in the Northeast Student Advisory Council. They are Olivia Di Ambrosio, Sophia Hartford, and Lily Ragusa, who is the state rep. All three have been instrumental in strengthening student voice at the high school and will now extend their work to our region as well as the state. Last week, Newburyport Bank ran their Excellence in Education awards. Four of our students were recognized. Our award recipients are Wesley Cochran, Caitlin Demann, Hollis Elrod, and Liza Marino. Congratulations and well deserved.
Our grade nine students and Ms. Mailhoy's homeless class participated with the N A N project. This program helps bring awareness around mental health. Based on the feedback from the presenters, they were very impressed with the engagement of our students and their thoughtful questions. And for sports updates, boys soccer is thirteen and one. Their one loss being the ALS Cup play on Saturday where they tied in the normal game and overtime and lost nine to eight in the shootout. They are now first place in the K B A league. Girls soccer is ten, two, and two, and they are first place in the K B A league as well, and they won their ALS Cup one to zero against Kentucky on Saturday. Boys cross country is four and O, and they are the K B A championships. Girls cross country is three and one, and they are second place in the K B A league. Golf is eleven and three. They are also second place in the K B A league. Football is three and three, and they are third place in the K B A league. Volleyball is five and nine, and they are first place in the K B A league. And field hockey is three, six, and six, and they are fourth place in the K B A league.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That soccer game was insane. We could hear it at my house over, and Julia Walker's here. I bet you could hear it at her house too. And it was, we know what was happening. It was like screams. It was crazy. We almost got up and right over there. But, uh, it was amazing. What, they actually didn't lose though, right? Isn't that the weird thing about soccer?
They didn't lose the game.
So the game was just tied.
The game was tied technically, but since somebody has to win the ALS Cup, they extended it to overtime and then the shootout.
All the penalties.
So they lost the ALS Cup, but I, I heard that they're not technically having lost the game.
Certainly interesting.
It's a tie.
Um, I've spoken to, uh, Ms. Hawkeizer and Ms. Hanson a couple days ago, just, you know, we as a group had spoken about having the student reps have, you know, more something to do with the meetings, part of the discussion. Not tonight so much because you wanna, you know, throw them in the hot seat immediately. I think it's a good idea. They're receptive toward it. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that, how you guys feel. I would have them be part of a discussion, particularly when it comes to student activities and things like that, you know, to see how it goes, whatever the next agenda will look like. Maybe I'll need any more.
It's a great idea.
How do you guys feel?
Sounds good.
Um, unless anybody has anything else to say, I mean, I guess we can excuse the, the student reps for tonight until the next meeting.
I have a question.
Sure.
Where will that poetry soup reading be? Is that at the high school?
I believe it's in Pleasant Chapel, down in the town.
Great, thank you.
The previous one was in the, like, under the trees opposite the parking lot, because my son was the kid who played. And we thought it was a thing for parents to go to. It was not. We're just standing in the darkness because there were no lights and we're like, no other parents are here, so we left. All right, great. Thank you very much for coming in and, uh.
I'm, I'm there right home, so.
Oh, you're to the right.
We're counting on your dollar tonight, Brian.
Okay.
I just would like to say thank you. It's very comprehensive for it. Appreciate it.
It was quite possibly the longest student report ever.
That's great. Thank you.
I gave you a way to maybe get the text to that, so it's, maybe members can stay up to date. Don't do it right now.
I'm gonna put it in the minutes.
Yeah, that would be great.
Great, thanks again. Um, all right, we are moving on to item number five. Uh, the policy subcommittee has several things to go over, and Ms. Baldwin?
Yes, the first policy we are reviewing for a first reading revision is the new member orientation policy, B C A. And the only change we really made to this was also allocating the co-chairs in helping new onboard new members. Did anybody have any additional feedback or comments for this version?
Is there, is there anything, I'm looking at it, is there anything that specifically says, maybe some, okay. All right, that's always the worst language. I mean, that was the idea, right?
Yes.
New people come in and a specific member to tell them what works.
Right, so then the idea was that each co-chair, I mean, each chair of a subcommittee would also meet with the new members to tell them about the various subcommittees and the work currently underway and the work coming up.
I think that will help.
The only suggestion I would make is that, um, that be done before they're sworn in, um, after the election, so that they have some input into what committees they might be interested in.
Right, right, because that's also what we were talking about earlier, because those won't be assigned until after the inauguration, right? So, um, do you wanna put that in there or have it just be a suggested practice? That it happens between the election and the.
I defer the policy chair.
We could add that language in.
And then we'll go on, next time. Any other questions for Ms. Baldwin? Steve?
Uh, and actually, this relates to the policy as well as to Superintendent Gallagher. Superintendent Gallagher, how do you feel about the requirements for the superintendent in this policy? Let me help.
The requirement to, requirement to get pizza for the.
I just think that it's, it's really useful that the superintendent has some, uh, role in onboarding any new school committee member. I just think it's really important because I think it, it, besides the policies that are really protocols and, uh, details of how business is done, I think, uh, if you get, if you're helping to onboard the new members, that they're gonna get a sense of kind of what your goals are, what you see for the district, things like that. Also, how, uh, you could see them, what the new members being, uh, as functional as possible early on in their experience.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm a hundred percent open to that. I think that's a great idea. That, I think the superintendent, not only myself, but some of the central office team could also be part of that onboarding for new members. From curriculum instruction to budget process to myself, I would, I think our team would love to be part of that process too.
Great, thank you. And the next policy, it's actually, it would be a new policy. And we assigned it the, the letters B C A A to fit in, in the policy manual under section B. And it is a draft for school committee meeting annual calendars. This was a document that was circulated and created by Steve Cole and Lu- Lukens?
Mike.
Mike Lukens, thank you, previously, and it has been revised and added to by Dave Hawkeizer. Dave, would you like to comment on this?
I'm sure. We've talked about this for a while. Uh, I looked at the calendars that had been there and some of that, some of the stuff on there was very specific to the year. And so I think what we tried to do at our last meeting was come up with, um, items that in general come up every year, just to kind of keep us on track on some things and so, so that the community could also understand when certain things fall. So if they're curious, they could look at a calendar and expect certain meetings to happen at certain times. And I think it's just good for us because, you know, like setting school committee goals is a great example because we tend to, we tend to go off course a lot. In some years, we've had them, in some years, we haven't. Some years, we write them in July and sometimes we write them the next February. So I think having some sort of a guide as actual policy would help whoever's setting agendas for meetings. And this isn't a comprehensive guide, it's just, it's kind of a minimum expectation. So obviously, we can add to this. Uh, I know the superintendent said you, you're looking at some things with your central office staff that you guys are gonna wanna put onto this, which is fine, you could always add to this, but from a school committee perspective, it's just a baseline for us to start with.
Yeah, um, I appreciate the work that's been done here. I had some questions and I had some suggestions about moving some of these items. But I also, some questions about some items that are on here that I, I'm not really sure need to be on here. So I don't know if it's better for me to walk through them.
Sure, go ahead.
Or to just do it in personnel, which I'd be happy to go to.
Or what was the other option? I'm sorry.
Just do it in personnel. We'll just revise it in personnel.
I, I can't, I just can't hear you.
Advise it in personnel, sorry.
You mean in policy?
Yeah, policy, person, policy.
That's why I was like, I didn't know what word you were saying.
I would prefer that you go through them.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, let's just do it here.
Sure. Uh, in August, um, preliminary discussion of district goals and school committee goals. It, it seems to me that, um, we would wanna be reviewing how we've done, um, at some point. And I didn't really see that, uh, oh, actually in June. So we have a review and discussion on school committee goals. That lines with what I was looking for. I, I was really surprised to see that, and I, I know this is incomplete, but I was really surprised to see a calendar presented that never mentions the strategic plan, never mentions reviewing it, getting presentations on it, checking how we're doing on it. So I would want to see that added specifically to the calendar, whether it makes sense to do it every three months or four or six. But I think that we really want to be tracking closely on the school committee, uh, school committee calendar, uh, the, um, strategic plan. In September, um, the school council planning, who is on them, process for acquiring new members, possible goals for the year. I'm uncomfortable with that because I, I don't believe school councils are, are answerable to the school committee. They are functions for each school. I'm, I'm totally fine with inviting all the school committees, getting to know who they are, even if they wanna make a presentation. But, um, their goals are the same goals every year, and that is to serve as an advisory council for the principal, to, uh, help the principal put together a budget and to do the school improvement plans. I, I don't know what, what additional goals.
So those are the, that's the purpose of the school council. The goals of the school council are what's that gonna look like this year? I just feel as if for most of the years that I've been on the committee, we haven't heard anything from the school councils, either before, during, or after. We used to, like, at the very beginning, and when I was on the Bresnian School Council before coming on the school committee, we came and did a presentation. But I really can't remember the last time we heard, especially at the beginning of the year, hey, here's the school council, this is what we're doing, or this is how we're going to form. These are some of the things we're gonna be talking about, like in the big picture. Um, it's just a, an information piece. And clearly, over the last couple meetings, we've heard at least some members of the public are interested to know what are the school councils doing, what are they up to?
I think it can be framed, it can be framed that we're not saying to them, hey, you have to do what we tell you to. But, you know, particularly when budget's concerned, because, you know, this is my fourth year, each year, previous, uh, Mr. Gallagher coming in, they did all the work behind the scenes and then we just kind of got a presentation, here it is. And there was no, we had no, at least I had no idea. No one ever talked to all of us at once saying, hey, the principal of this school and us are talking about X in terms of budget, um, requests or what have you. So if they did come in, however, whatever the timeframe is, and just let us know what's going on, just as an open communication about that, particularly about budget. So we just don't find out about it at the presentation and then we vote on it the week later.
And this, this thing in September doesn't even say they have to be here. It's just, somebody should say, hey, listen, the high school is looking for members doing this, and, you know, the middle school is doing this, that, and the other thing. Just, just some information at the beginning of the year, how, how do things look?
I've been, um, I've been insistent that school council members show up at budget presentations. And I, I'm to the point where I've told principals, I'm, you don't have a school council member by your side when you make the presentations, then I'm, I'm, I'm gonna assume that I have no idea how involved, um, the, um, school council was. So, and we have mostly been getting for, for years, school council members showing up with principals when they make budget presentations. And that, that's one way that, that I've tried to check and make sure that they're engaged in that process. So it, it's not true that we don't hear from them. We do hear from them.
I, I don't remember, like I said, before I came on the school committee, we all came up as a school council, made a presentation with the principal. I don't remember that happening for years now. So there might be somebody in the audience who represents the school council, but it's not, it hasn't been the same process. And I think, I think just letting us know some things at the beginning of the year about how the process might look is a good idea.
Uh, do you guys wanna go back and try and wordsmith that section and see? Because I think Bruce, your main thing is it almost seems like we're telling them what to do.
Right. And also, not all of the school councils are constituted by the end of September. Some of them are constituted in early October, depending on when the election, so it doesn't seem to me that that's a September thing.
Okay, it could be an October thing, or, but it does say there, like, what's the process, what's the process and what's the plan? So, even if they're not constituted.
We can move these things around. I mean, it's a pretty fluid calendar, really, right?
Yes.
Yes, but we could.
We're not gonna be voting that we have to do these, every single thing in a specific month.
Right. And would it make more sense for your administrative team to report what their council is doing, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is a great start in a draft, but maybe the policy, as Dave was talking, each school year, there's new challenges, and as Bruce mentioned, the strategic plan. You may not be doing the strategic plan so intense intensely in like three or four or five years. So maybe the policy is the school committee sets agenda items, like in August at the retreat. So you have this draft, the school committee members go through it with the superintendent. And, uh, our new central office team, we bring central office team, so then you would have each year, you'd probably have a lot of reoccurring themes and agenda items that are already here. But then you give the school committee an opportunity if there are things that are challenging for the school year that they may want to see. You know what I'm saying? Instead of just, so maybe the, the policy is, or the idea of the policy is school committee will set agenda items during the August retreat for the school year with some of these reoccurring themes every, every month. So, just, just a thought.
And like I said, these are just baseline. So if it's a year we're working on a strategic plan, we're gonna have to add that. But we're not gonna, um, not talk about kindergarten tuition because it's a strategic plan year. Or even last year is a COVID year, we still had to talk about kindergarten tuition. So, I, I think this is, this is just a baseline of things, um, that, that need to, need to be there. We can always add to it, depending on the year. We can always add to it, depending on the year.
The curriculum presentation that you have in October and in November, my understanding is that we have an ad hoc committee that's been constituted to do curriculum, instruction of student life, and that Lisa Marie, the assistant superintendent, should be reporting that out on a, on a, on a meeting by meeting basis, what kind of activities are happening there. That doesn't preclude presentations by staff coming in here and talking about curriculum, but that's, we should be getting a lot of that information through her reports, to the committee and to the community.
All right, that should be a every meeting, like it wants to.
Yep, I agree.
Lisa Marie?
Yes.
Every meeting, you'll be sitting right up here next to Sean.
Every other meeting, okay.
Right, every other, okay.
In November, I wasn't sure the initial program of studies presentation, I wanted, just to hear what that is. What, I'm sorry, I wanted to hear what the initial program of studies presentation was in November.
I think every, every spring for the past couple of years, we've realized that we're supposed to be voting on and improving the high school program of studies and the handbook, and we, we don't. It's just a discussion of, you know, what are we thinking of adding, what are we thinking of not having anymore, what's, what's the kind of core structure look like, again, not necessarily for our approval, but it helps because, again, some of the budget, sometimes the budget presentation feels like a, oh, now we're hearing about it, and we have to vote about it, vote on it in two weeks, instead of hearing how it's being developed.
So, so what you're talking about in November is sort of an initial presentation or conversation about what's going to be in the handbook, in terms of the program of studies?
Moving forward.
And we usually vote for the handbook in the spring, late spring.
Right, but we haven't. I can't remember the last time we've done that.
Last time I remember is, I think it was the Val Sal conversation.
Yeah.
I, I think we've had that conversation, and I think that that's something that could simply be moved into the spring somewhere, a review of all handbooks, not just the high school, but all handbooks, which is kind of, which is required by statute, if I'm not mistaken.
In January, you, you have check-in on superintendent progress, that seems kind of ambiguous to me, progress on the strategic plan, on district goals, on superintendent goals.
The superintendent goals, I mean, normally, everybody has some sort of a formative, hey, this is what's going on, I've set up these goals for the year, we're halfway through the year, this is where I am, this is what I think I'm going to need for the spring.
It's, it's less ambiguous to have the superintendent goals.
Yeah.
I want to yield to, I know the mayor and the superintendent would like to speak, so I just want to bring that.
I'll yield to the mayor.
Okay.
I think that the school improvement plans are missing totally from here, and those are the two-year plans that really develop the goals and objectives and updates for, and those have been wonderful presentations to the school committee over the years, and those usually occur in the fall, and I would recommend that they be included in here somewhere, because they're not there. I also, I see it, and I'm not sure that all of the entire school committee does, but the October report, which is the, you know, massive data report that goes into department, DESI regarding numbers and, you know, other data, and maybe just a quick update from, you know, our assistant superintendent on that report, we just received numbers from S. Exaggy, I have questions about that. So I think that that might be a, a good thing to have, just a quick overview update, what are our numbers in the school, you know, that, that type of data.
In October, we lock down what our population is, right, with the state.
Right, right, and that's our, our Chapter 70 funding is based on that October report, and number of kids who enroll in fresh red, who are out of district, and it's a good time to present that kind of data to us.
I agree.
So maybe you could do that at your next meeting, if that would be okay with the superintendent to give us an update on the October report. The other thing too is that in here it says two school presentations, what about the other two schools? They're not in here anywhere.
One, two in December, two in January.
Did I miss the one in January?
Yeah, it's on the third, third one down.
So the prop, we.
You have December here, two school progress presentation, oh, then the others in January, gotcha, okay, just wanted to be sure that was there.
Okay.
And I just want to also, again, clarify, so that, that presentation that we're getting from them is going, is that going over the SIP, the school improvement plan?
Yeah, that's usually, I mean, they usually, over the years, they've done a wide variety of different presentations, but the school improvement plan is often, oftentimes part of that. Sometimes it's like a precursor to budget requests.
Exactly.
Like an early season kind of budget thing, sometimes it, it does, like, I think sometimes we blended the MCAS presentations into those, sometimes we've done a separate MCAS presentation. So yes, I didn't want to, I don't want to be, I don't think we needed to be too prescriptive, just as long as we're hearing from the schools.
I think it should say SIP.
Okay.
It should include the school improvement plan, because that's really important.
Absolutely.
In May, superintendent presents goal completions for the year, and again, if we could be more specific, district goals, superintendent goals, strategic plan goals.
I, I was thinking about his goals, the superintendent goals. You know, really, if, if we had district goals that differed from the superintendent goals, we should hear about them then as well, that way we can wrap the whole thing up at our June meeting before we go away for, for July. If there are strategic plan goals for the year, it'd be great to hear about those then as well.
And the only other suggestion that I had was, under July retreat, you have the school committee evaluation, and I, I thought it was useful, and I'm not really sure why we wouldn't be doing that during our regular school year, why we wouldn't be doing that in June, as opposed to, I mean, it seems to me that, that we can discuss our self-evaluation in June, and then what we discuss about in July is, okay, now we know this about ourselves, what do we need to do?
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I appreciate everyone's feedback, and I think it's, as Mr. Hawkeye just said, this is a good draft to start. The other piece is, over the past few years, hearing that people want a little more curriculum instruction and student life, and that's why we developed this ad hoc committee, made up of, you know, multiple stakeholders. So a lot of those presentations, the idea of that is, a lot of those presentations will be presented at that meeting, and then we also have school committee involvement on that subcommittee, or that ad hoc committee. So the idea is, those presentations that school committee feel are important to bring to the general committee as a whole, that's where it would be. So it really gives us, I think, an opportunity at the CISO meetings to really focus on curriculum instruction and student life. As part of that, we also, we have minutes that would be adopted, not approved, but adopted as part of the record. In our assistant superintendent report with Ms. Bolito, we'll really talk about those items for each month. So I think this, this is also another way of the district to really communicate to the general public on all the great things that are happening. At the same time, not the business meetings that we're running here as committee as a whole, it will give us an opportunity in the CISO meetings to really expand on a lot of the great work that's going on in the district, instead of a, you know, 10-minute presentation, 20-minute presentation at the committee as a whole. So that's the idea, so I think a lot of the curriculum questions and bullet points on this list will also be addressed in our ad hoc committee, and then we're really excited about that, because I think as we get our, you know, feet under us a little bit with that curriculum instruction and student life, we can always expand that, to make that even more, you know, really enhance that, depending on what the school committee and the school committee would like to see, so. So I am excited, I think that's just another opportunity to really promote a lot of the great things that are going on in the district, and that's where you'll have your student presentations, curriculum presentations, and then we can bring those to the committee as a whole, those ones, but Lisa Marie, our assistant superintendent, will be reporting on a lot of those, you know, really summarizing those monthly meetings, so school committee and the general public will get, I think, a, a great presentation, informative presentation at that time, too.
Brandon?
So is, is the next step in this to work on some of these changes and have, and have policy meet with superintendent and the assistant superintendent to populate this calendar with things that they want us to be dealing with? Is that the next step?
Sounds logical to me, we can do that.
Right, and I, I agree, I think we can have some general, as we start separating, like some of the CISO items, and then business items, committee as a whole items, and I also, also recommend, especially with our changing environment, you know, if we were developing this calendar, there's nothing that talks about COVID, right? So that's why I really believe if, when we have our school committee retreat, I think one of the agenda writers in the task is to work with the school committee every year in August and develop, you know, this type of an agenda for the, the current year. You know, as Mr. Hawkeye just said, you know, we're talking kindergarten tuition, well, the goal is, part of our new strategic plan as we start developing that, is to have free, free kindergarten for all families, so that agenda item, hopefully, down the road, we'll be able to take off. So that's, that's one of our goals, but I think this is a great list to start, and, you know, I, I think we welcome informing the school, school community on a lot of the great things that we're doing.
For the next, anybody else?
I just want to reiterate that the goal is to create as minimal as possible calendar here, like, these are the things that we just want to make sure, on a broad brush sense, we hit every year, and the general timing of them. So while the superintendent and central office are more than welcome to add on to this, I would say only if you really want to codify doing certain things at certain times every year, you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if, if you want to leave other stuff a little bit more flexible, that's fine, I just think there are some things that, for good reasons, we tend to forget sometimes. So it's a nice idea, especially understanding the potential of a pretty major shift in personnel, that a list like this exists for us, or for you.
Okay.
Great, thank you all, we will revisit this, and we will simplify the language, and also maybe change it to make sure that it's understood that this is a fluid document, and that we're not going to be rigidly following it every year, but it's, it's to guide us. So thank you all, and if you have any further thoughts, feel free to email them to me. The final policy we had to discuss tonight was to the school year calendar, in addition, we made to policy IC, and I'm going to read the new language. Newburyport School calendars will always follow these guidelines with regards to setting a starting date for school. The Friday before Labor Day will always be a no-student day and a non-work day for educators. Before the full beginning of the year, time will be set up to allow students in transition years one, four, six, and nine, time in their new buildings to become acclimated before all students arrive. New teacher orientation and otherwise stipended days are not considered regular faculty days, and can therefore take place outside of this policy. In years when Labor Day falls on September one to four, schools start after Labor Day. Regular faculty days will also start after Labor Day, unless specifically requested for approval by the superintendent and applicable labor unions. All students grades one to 12 will have at least one complete school day during the first week of programming. In years when Labor Day falls on September five to seven, we will start school during the week before Labor Day. Regular faculty days will not start before the Monday before Labor Day. All students grades one to 12 will have at least one completed school day during this first week of programming.
This is pretty much codifying what we talked about like two years ago, just we didn't have to talk about the calendar for 10 meetings.
The only question I have is, I assume superintendent, that this aligns with the contracts that we have with teacher and staff?
I think that's something that I'll have to go back and look at, but I believe so. I think the only difference is it gives the flexibility for the district, like if these days, the, you know, you may start school at a certain time, but I'll, I mean, we, there's a negotiation here this year for all three unions, and that's kind of the language we've been utilizing in the past to determine when we start school, either before or after Labor Day.
Yeah, I knew it sounded familiar, but I just want to make sure that, that at least now, we have common language, and if we need to make changes that have to be negotiated, that, that gets added to our list.
Correct. I, I'll have to go back and I'll look, and also touch base with the union officials, too, just to make sure.
It's a very, it's a very clear policy, it's very clearly written, so I, I think it would be a useful policy to have.
I agree.
I just want to make sure that.
Good?
Great.
Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion on the first reading, or not? I guess.
I don't think we do that, no.
No, I think you guys will go and make sure it's right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll rework it a little.
Thank you very much.
So are we going to do a, a second reading on these at the beginning of November, or?
We have to do a first reading on that last one, because we're not ready to do a first reading.
Okay.
Do you want to do a first reading on the last one, on IC?
Well, I think superintendent wants to check.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yes.
Fine.
All right, next up.
We have a year to get it right.
Say it again.
You have a year to get it right.
Yeah.
For at least five months or something like that.
Uh, next up, Mr. Gallagher, Superintendent Gallagher, has a, his report, which will be budget process overview, de-cap update, CISO, MCAS, and strategic planning form. Are you good with the screen there?
All right, well, hopefully. There we go.
So much of this CISO thing.
So far, so good. All right, do I, oh, I need to speak. Yep, wireless mic. Okay. Is there a power button on this? Okay, can you all hear me back there? All right, thumbs up, two thumbs up, thank you, I appreciate that. Just a, a couple of things before we get into the de-cap presentation, I also, we found out today, which is very positive for our athletic program, we got the Dalton Division III Award, which means Newburyport High School, the Boston Globe Dalton Award, is having the overall best winning percentage of all athletic teams in the high school. It's a great accomplishment, the number one high school athletic program in the state, so congratulations to all of our student athletes, our coaches. That's just really impressive, so I think at our next meeting, I can, I'll read a little bit more in detail what that accomplishment was, but once again, just thank our coaches and student athletes for all their dedication and commitment, that's a real hard award to win. I just wanted to touch base regarding our budget calendar timeline, and we'll have a, probably more of a presentation, as Mr. Little Hale is working on the end of the year report, I think he's in the back still working on that, so it's a lot of fun, he turns different colors of red when I know he's working on the end of the year report. But really, the budget guidelines, so Mr. Little Hale and I will be developing our budget. budget guidelines for all budget holders, um, which kind of assist them in the budget process. Um, then, as you all know, right now, our principals are meeting with their school councils in October and November, assisting with budget priorities. As we've done in the past, we'll meet with our budget holders in November and December, so that's individual meetings with all of our principals, the Mullen, Brezner Hand, high school, and the middle school. In addition, our other budget holders throughout the district, our buildings and grounds, our special education department, technology, athletics, and our curriculum instruction and professional development. All of those personnel, uh, will meet individually first, and typically, what we've done in the past, is after those individual meetings, we create a draft budget book, and then January and February is when we begin to have district-wide deliberations in developing, uh, district priorities. Um, and then March, February and March is where we have our preliminary budget presentation, and that was the overall, if you recall, this year, um, putting it all together on what the bottom line would be if everything, uh, is approved. And then we continue, um, to work with our budget holders, and then I know last year, at each school committee, we continue to give updates throughout that process until the final vote, which will be, I believe, in April. Uh, last year, I think it was May third, uh, and then the school budget is then passed on to, uh, city council. So that's kind of like the timelines in general. Um, working with Mr. Li- Little Hale, he'll have probably just some tweaks a little bit, um, with his experience in developing the operational budget, so we look forward to working with him, uh, throughout the process. All right. I, um, we're really excited, um, I didn't, did we bring that booklet with us? Oh, that was a visual, that would have sold it. So we have a, um, really excited in the sense of working with the D cap, which is the district accommodation plan, uh, really ties in, um, to a lot of work, so we took our existing or our older, uh, D cap plan, uh, we worked with our central office team along with our extended leadership team over the summer, uh, to develop a comprehensive D cap, uh, program for accommodations, uh, in the generalized classroom, and then really developed a system district-wide at every school, uh, and a systematic, um, di- district accommodation plan regarding supporting students, uh, that aren't, that are struggling in class or aren't as successful, uh, as we would like them to be. So really, the, I'm not going to read through all of these, because it's part of your PowerPoint, but really, we pulled out the beliefs, Newburyport Public Schools, through our strategic plan. Um, so these are a lot of the themes that come out of the current strategic plan regarding our beliefs that every student can learn, and every student, um, we're going to work to, so they reach their academic and social potential. So the development of the D cap, extended leadership team retreat, we reviewed the previous D cap models, um, together, and we really collaborated, um, at the building-based teams and central office. So everyone took part of our, uh, older D cap, and really developed it to meet the needs of our students today. Uh, we continue to streamline the updating our practices, and then part of our, uh, universal procedures for our student study team process. So that's going to be at every building. So for the general public that may be watching tonight, instead of watching the Red Sox, so I appreciate that, um, so the D cap basically is an accommodation, uh, plan that each district are required to have, and basically, it really provides when a student is not achieving success in class, the tier one interventions is for the general education, uh, teachers, and we really articulate, um, different types of modifications and accommodations that really need to be tried, um, you know, for the students. So it focuses on both the academic and also behavior. Um, our school councils is part of the district accommodation planning and review, so not only does school councils work on the operational budget, but it's also part of the district accommodation plan. So they review, they provide input to principals, um, in looking at all the different accommodations, um, that are required by the general ed teachers. So it's really, to assist general education educators, if you skip down to the bottom, that last bullet is really what it, the D cap is in a nutshell. It's written to summarize resources and procedures that are available to teachers and principals to meet the students' needs in the regular, regular education classroom. Whose responsibility is it for the D cap? It's actually all staff, um, to individualize, uh, accommodations to support students that may be struggling in the classroom. Uh, it's a building-based model, the multi-tiered system of support, which is obviously highlighted in the state DESI, and parent guiding communication is an important part of this process, and then establishing those personal relationships, home and school connections is a must. So Massachusetts tiered system, so that's on your PowerPoint, and that just brings you to what the framework is. So it's a multi-tiered general, generally refers to three tiers, corresponded to different intensities of support. Tier one is really eighty to ninety percent of the students, uh, it's the foundation of the support for all students, involves teaching critical skills and behaviors that all students are expected to learn, and there's two pieces. There's the core academics, and then there's a core behavioral. So a student that might be struggling academic, there's accommodations to support, and, uh, those students in the general ed classroom, and students that may be, uh, dealing with behavioral, um, issues in the class, there's also accommodations that the teacher can try. These are proven practices, um, that can be very effective for a student that is struggling. Tier two, targeted support, is your five to ten percent. So basically, these supports are the student receives, um, general education and in the classroom, and then this is additional support outside of the classroom. Uh, a little more intensified support, um, for the students, which is really highlighted and articulated in our D cap, which is also online right now, so you can look our D cap up, um, and how, um, many accommodations, and a very clear process, uh, for students and families. So your tier three is intensive support, that's about one to five percent of our students, and this is serious and chronic needs, often but not always receive special education services, and will receive individual services from specialists. Outside services such as community practitioners may be involved, part of the team. So this is a process, um, through the district, student is struggling, we attempt the tier one interventions to get them back on track. If it's unsuccessful, uh, we utilize the tier two interventions, and if we're still unsuccessful, unsuccessful, we utilize tier three. Uh, we've, all of our, um, principals and extended leadership team, we've been, uh, sharing this and working with our faculty on this, um, and working with them in, regarding the various accommodations, um, that can assist our students. Uh, best practices, um, so really, D cap modifications, um, they don't change the content of the curriculum, so this all ties to a lot of the work we do with Billy Donigan and our skills-based instruction, so everyone meets the standards, so we're not changing the standards, we're not changing the expectations, we're actually just changing the delivery and the access for the students. And then, uh, last but not least, is our student support team, so each individual building has a team, and, uh, part of the work that we did over the summer is a unified plan across all the buildings. So when a student is struggling, uh, the referral process is going to be very similar, um, at each building, which I think will bring consistency throughout the district. And those are my, that's it? Yes?
I might not have the right acronym, but was it response to intervention? Sorry.
RTI?
RTI, was that? Does this replace that?
No, that's all, this is just, um, really highlighting, I think, district-wide, of, number one, a process when students aren't succeeding, but also provides our teachers in the general ed setting, accommodations that they can utilize so students can achieve success. So your RTI, your interventions, and all of the, uh, programming that we have in place to support are all still there. This is not replacement. This is just really developing, uh, best practice with the faculty in the beginning when a student starts to struggle. Yes?
This is wonderful progress. I just had a question on how this differentiates from a 504 plan?
Right, so I think for the, there's two, two ways with the 504 plan, so I think if a student has, obviously, a diagnosed, you know, the two areas, if you have a diagnosed disability, right, that's one criteria, and then a student that it's having a major impact in a, the disability is having a major impact in a, you know, a lifestyle or function. So I think those are the two criteria, so you still have the 504 process, um, that if a student comes in with those two criteria, then you're going to go through a 504 process. But what I think this also enables, uh, for our families and students, if they aren't successful, so if there is a disability, but it's not having a major impact on the academics or the behavioral, then you'd be able to provide these accommodations so they can have success. So it's not, it's really not even going to replace a 504 process, the ones, uh, that meet those two criteria, but I think for students that may have some learning disabilities or disabilities, this will also provide, I think, support where they may not need the 504 plan. Yeah. Um, and this really tie, if, if you start looking, um, at the accommodations, when you look at tier one, two, and three, a lot of this work was already done with Billy Donigan. It really comes back to that skills-based instruction, where you have the standard, and then you develop different, um, assessments and different modifications for all students to achieve the standard. So, it really ties into a lot of the work that, that we've already done, and I just wanted to thank our extended leadership team, because when we looked at our old plan, it wasn't as, I think, specific and helpful for teachers. Um, I think the new plan with the modifications that we made are going to be very detailed, not only for the teachers, but also for parents. So when we're, when a parent's student is struggling, they'll be able to utilize and take a look at the D cap, and look at some of those accommodations, and then work with the teacher, and say, can we try X, Y, Z, which is part of the D cap? So I think it's going to provide a lot better communication with, uh, the classroom teacher and the families for success. Um, and I just want to thank, as I said, I can't thank the extended leadership team enough for their work, and I'm really proud of the document. Um, you know, every year, we're going to look at it and modify it, but I think this is a great start, um, for our students and families. All right? Yes?
Yes, uh, just, just looking at tier two and tier three, uh, just, this is just a general question. So would, uh, students in tier two, I, I know you show that they may be, uh, they may receive instruction in small directed groups. Is the difference between two and three, where three might have more of a one-to-one flavor?
Yeah, really, one and two are very similar, so if the combinations in one aren't successful, then you can go to the tier two, so you are still receiving, uh, best practices in the class, but now they're, they're modifying it even more, where you have the, the small group instruction. Um, tier three is more intensified, so that's where you're probably going to see, um, not necessarily, but maybe some more special ed services and outside services for the tier three. One and two are, are more interchangeable.
So with three, would you see like a one-to-one staff work?
Yeah, you could, depending on, on what, uh, what the challenges are for, for every student. But that's where you're going to see the one to five students, percentage of students, they're going to need that more intensified level three.
So, just in, looking at, uh, students that were out of district and you're thinking of trans- transitioning back, would they maybe start in tier three, or depends on what the needs are?
Could be, yes. I, I would s- suggest a student that may be outside placed, that's coming back to the district, we would make sure there are supports in place to support their success, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, isn't that nice?
Yeah. Did you open that one?
I did.
Yeah.
I was like, how can I end this presentation? Right there. All right. Um, at this time, I'd like to call up our assistant superintendent, Lisa Maria Bolito, who will just kind of go over, um, our SISL, uh, development and, and kind of, you know, how that came about, um, and I want to thank her for all her work on this. I, this was one of our conversations, um, basically, you know, we'd like to add more curriculum instruction assessment, um, really presentations, and I talked about this SISL idea, and within twenty-four hours, we have a SISL committee, so that's how it works. So I want to thank her very much for all of her hard work, and she'll walk you through that process.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Might have to use a teacher voice.
Okay, I'm going to try my best to use my teacher voice.
Yes, nice and loud.
Um, and honestly, he's not giving himself enough credit, obviously, this is the superintendent's vision, I'm just, you know, helping him to bring it to life. Uh, we're very excited about this committee, the SISL committee. Um, the main purpose has been stated a couple times tonight, this is an ADCAH, which means specifically task committee, uh, with the goal of, uh, focusing on all aspects of curriculum instruction and student life, um, and during our times together, we bring various topics to the table, and we have an outstanding group of, a minimum of fourteen different stakeholders at the table, to give their points of view, um, of the various topics that we are talking about, to help us grow together as a district, and learn together as a district, um, and truly function as a team. I'm very happy to say that we also, um, of those fourteen members, have three students. We have two middle school students and one high school student, um, and I think that's our favorite part of the meeting, when they, uh, bring their voice to the table. They're, uh, super intelligent, and I also want to thank Mr. Menon and, um, I only want to call you by your first name.
Mrs. Falding.
Mrs. Falding, for being members of the, uh, SISL committee. So this, um, kind of goes along with the calendar that Mr. Cole, Mr. Um, Lukens, and Mr. Hawke has been talking about. So this is just a flexible plan so far, what we have mapped out for SISL. In September, uh, we talked about strategic planning, we did an update on the start of the school year, each student did a presentation of their perspective of the start of the school year, and then the administration in the room then provided, um, their perspective and how the start of the school year went. Uh, one constant at every single meeting will be the spotlight on school and student work, and that is a presentation by our student members. Um, in September, we had, um, Mr. Doyle, um, come to our meeting, and he and Gardner did a presentation on the summer lit camp, and gave everyone an update, like kind of an inside scoop of what happens, uh, during that time. Our next meeting is actually on Monday at the Mullen Library, and our meetings are posted, um, and we will be reviewing the MCAS data during that time, um, again, doing a spotlight on student work, um, other programming, and we have just started using a new tool called the Google Data Analytic Tool, that takes all the data that we, um, have within the district, and it gets merged into one, um, tool, so that we are able to, um, look at students in a very complete, comprehensive way, and also, um, this tool will help us make some educational decisions in terms of curriculum, um, and, you know, possible interventions that, uh, students may need to be supported with, among other things. In November, we're going to have an extended meeting, uh, the meeting is actually going to be two hours, so each principal, we had a meeting last week with them, are putting together a half-hour presentation each on their school improvement plans. Within their school improvement plans will also be their school-based MCAS data, we're aware, the meeting next week is more a high-level district data. Again, we're going to be doing a spotlight on, uh, school and student work, as well as some professional development updates. And then in January is... And then in January is when we hope to begin our work around the district literacy plan, among other things. And again, still flexible, we also want to bring in at the high school, our career, college and career readiness counselor, to bring him in to talk about what his work is. We have some exciting things, place-based learning going on at the middle school, as well as literacy rollout happening at the elementary school. So we have a lot on our plate that we want to present and share with the district. And it's an open meeting, so please come. And I think that, that's my thank you.
Well, thank you.
Sean, she's really worn up to you.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to top him, you know? Any questions for me?
I guess two questions. Number one, your, the slide decks and minutes from these meetings, there's going to be like a new spot on the website or something like that?
Yes, so we're working on that piece. So the minutes from our first meeting in August were already shared. And so our meeting next week, we approve our September minutes. And so they will all be posted. And then it will be a SISIL presentation every other school committee meeting, because that's how it will work, we only meet once a month. And the slide deck and the minutes will be included in your school committee packet.
Okay. Because it seems like some of those presentations used to happen here, they're now going to be moved over there. So I think people are just going to have to learn to understand that. But those meetings, are they publicly announced?
Yes, they're publicly posted, just like a school committee meeting.
So people will know to go to or to view, they streaming anywhere or something like that?
At this time, they're not recorded because we have students, young students, part of our committee, so.
It's going to create some, okay. And I guess the other question is, are you, when you say all curriculum, is it going to focus like fully all curriculum? Because a lot of the stuff up there was literacy, which is great, obviously. But like, for example, I know superintendent was talking a lot about building, started to look at building the arts curriculum. So is that also something that's going to go there?
So as he said, we're kind of, like, I'm new, I just started in July, and that's not an excuse, but it's just kind of getting our feet wet. So I know that we have the art fest in the spring, so I'm looking to bring, you know, we're hiring a new person, seeing Mr. Gaios is now an assistant principal, so I'm hoping to bring that person to the table. So that is just like a very cursory, that's why I said it's flexible, because we want to be highlighting the exciting things happening in the district throughout the SISIL meeting. So it isn't, I know there's a lot of literacy because a lot of our work right now is around literacy, but no, it's going to be flexible encompassing all the areas of curriculum.
The Google Analytics tool sounds really neat. I'm wondering if it will be presented to the school committee at some point so that we can see how it works? Also, I wonder, will the reports on the students follow them through the district as they move from each school?
Yes, it's going to store historical data. And the only thing about it will have to be screenshots and because it lists actual student names, right, identifying information, but it is pretty cool. We've been working with Paul Manuti and we're just really excited, we're rolling it out to the principals. We just had a principal training last Tuesday on the tool and they're really excited and, you know, the MCAS data got released, it's one of my favorite things. It's like Christmas.
I assume that's the thing that we spent, we spent a couple years ago, like at the not great, we were in the library, the whole night, is that the same thing we're talking about?
Or an iPad or whatever to look at?
Yeah.
So now we're actually using.
Great.
We'll do like this Cheshire Cat print, maybe it's not, see it right through.
See, we're paying attention.
And I just want to say one thing about the D cap also, that we put it on cardstock and we bound them, so every principal has their own copy and there's a copy in every office, every school office. So when parents, you know, as they're waiting, they want to peruse this beautiful document, they may. And I'm sorry, it's my bad that we don't have the hard copy. I forgot it. Although am I?
Can we have one at the next meeting?
Yes.
Can you at least bring one?
Yes. We're very proud of it because what feels good about it is everyone on the extended leadership team had a hand in recreating this document with purpose and aligning it and making it as much as we can vertically align from pre-K all the way to twelve. And really talking about the accommodations and what students need. And so when we're doing Best Buy Kids, that's when we're at our best and happiest. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and just to follow up, a hundred percent. So I think the assistant superintendent report will be followed up. You'll get those presentations and the meeting notes in your packet. And then assistant superintendent Ibelito will be able to talk to a lot of that. But the other piece is some of those great presentations or presentations that the committee of the whole would like to see, we can bring those forward too. So I think it's going to give the community a great overview of the work that we're doing, but also school committee has the opportunity to select some of those presentations that you'd like to have for the committee of the whole, so. All right. One more. I think I just have the, I think, the MCAS report, though Lisa Marie's going to be doing the overview at SISIL, but just, we wanted to let everyone know that the MCAS results were mailed out, I think, last week or two weeks ago with a letter to all of the parents regarding the test scores. And then I believe Lisa Marie Ibelito will come back and kind of give that same overview, the district overview. I think the other piece with Ms. Ibelito and her extensive work on data analysis and data is we're getting results for our kids. And, you know, there's a lot of, I think, innuendos in the sense that kids lost a year of learning and all of that. Preliminary data, MCAS data along with internal data right now is kind of showing just the opposite, where I think we're in a good place as we begin this school year of our student academic achievement. So it's a good baseline to start with, but she'll also be sharing that information. The data analytics work that she's been doing since the summer is really impressive. So teachers eventually, and principals right now, but teachers at the classroom level will have the ability to have a snapshot of every student that's in front of them and their strengths and kind of the areas. So we're excited about that, making informed decisions around, you know, our student achievement. So the other last piece is our strategic planning forum. I did mention this, I believe, at our COVID forum. So the idea is to have, invite all of our parents and guardians, the ones that would like to attend a strategic plan forum at the middle school. We really believe we'll, to work with our parents individually in person, I think is really important. So the idea would be, we would start off in the auditorium and then an administrator along with a teacher leader will have small breakout rooms and will run through the strategic planning process. So we'll do aspects of the graduate, like what are the skill sets that we need? And then we'll also do the review of the strategic plan. Very similar process that we've done with the school committee and city council, although we keep making changes because every time you do a presentation, you can do things a little bit better. But it would be small group, working with parents. The idea for us is to bring all parents together at different levels. Originally, we were thinking if we had Brezlinian parents, Mullen parents in separate, but I think some of those ideas that we have on what are the skills and knowledge for our students when they graduate, I think having different perspectives from elementary parents to high school parents, to middle school parents and guardians, I think will be really valuable. So that's our goal. We're penciling in November 10th. We were looking at November 4th, but we have a Mullen parent night that night. So November 10th is open district-wide, so that's going to, what we're penciling in for our parent guardian strategic plan forum at this time. And then at the building level, we'll continue to work with our students and get their input, either through advisory at the middle school and high school. And then we're trying to utilize some sort of a survey for our elementary students. So to make it great appropriate to get their input too. So we're excited about the process. So November 10th, right before the day off, so before our families leave, just come to strategic planning first, you know? But that's all I have.
You know Tom Nuthers?
We're going to do a six to eight. And that will be open for all parents and guardians and also invite some of our local representatives and even state reps if they want to come and say hi to our families. We'll make it like a great community night for everybody.
Very cool, thanks. Is there any questions about that for the superintendent? Nope? All right, that's all, thank you. Is there any new business anybody wants to bring up? Mary Alden?
I just wanted to point out that I was, Lisa Furlong had reached out to me and asked me to come in and meet with her and Aaron, I'm sorry, I'm going to wreck his name, Robotten Smith?
Yep, Smith. I just go with Smith.
Smith, yeah. Aaron Smith, he is the new career and college readiness person at the high school. And he has seventy-eight students already in internships. I was really impressed. And so they just, you know, again, wanted to kind of pick my brain because of some of the relationships I have with businesses. And we're going to do a breakfast at city hall in early December and invite probably even maybe two breakfasts, dividing it into, you know, maybe healthcare, technology, manufacturing, hospitality, break it up into groups and be able to try and enhance additional internships and relationships with businesses in the town with students. And I just am really, really pleased that this program is kicking off. It's something that I think is so important to our high school students that they have opportunities to have internships. And so I think that, you know, I was pretty impressed with what they've accomplished already and, you know, the work that Aaron has done in terms of outreach, you know, to broad base across our city and the region. So nice work.
Yes, and I would also like to follow up. That's part of the college and career readiness initiative that we started a few years ago and Mr. Wolf and his team have been great. And I also want to give some credit to our student reps over there, Olivia and Avery, who've really taken advantage of the Do Enrollment Program. They, if you don't mind, you started your sophomore years taking college classes and the goal is by the time they graduate, they'll have an associate's degree along with high school diploma. So that's kind of, they're the pioneers right now. So we want to thank them for their efforts in that.
Wonderful. Anybody else, anybody else, sorry, does anybody else have anything new business?
I just have one. So we typically, and this is from Joanne Yell and Pam Keely. So we typically in the joint city council and school committee meeting, when we do the budget overview, there's usually a dinner or there used to be a dinner or refreshments and food and we just didn't know if we're still going to be doing that with COVID or not. So the mayor and I can work that out after to see if we can do that. Because you know me, I like a sandwich before those meetings.
Is it possible for us to take a vote to endorse that idea?
I'm sure everyone would like that. We'll make it happen if we can.
Perfect.
All right, thanks, John. So do we have to adjourn before we go to executive session? All right, then, this part of the meeting is over, we're going to go to executive session and we will not be returning to open session. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out.
We're going into executive session for the purpose of...
Litigation.
Possible litigation and legal matters, not to be convenient.
Hopefully it's to be correct.
Can we get a motion?
Second.
Roll call, roll call, roll call vote, please, Miss Kennedy.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Falding?
Yes.
And Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Holliday?